And of course, this is a joint study session of the City Council, Planning Commission, Design Review, and the Transportation and Circulation Commissions. So we have a lot of folks here interested in seeing what's being proposed, as well as, hopefully, a good conversation about that project. So the roll call for the City Council should reflect that all members are here except for Councilmember Burks, who tweeted me and said he was stuck in traffic. So, Planning Commissioners, roll call.
All members are here except Commissioner.
Person.
Okay, Design Review Commission?
We're all here except for.
Okay, Traffic Circulation?
We have four, but I reviewed.
Okay, so three are present. Is that good enough roll call for the record, or do you need specific names? Okay, we're good. All right, that brings us to adoption of the agenda.
Can I move, will you adopt the agenda?
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion from those involved? Okay, call the question. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. We will proceed now with the study session. Pyle, if you would lead us on this, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Councilmembers, members of the commissions, and members of the public. The project before you this evening is a study session for redevelopment of the, what is called, the corporate terrace site and a parcel neighboring it. This is the project site indicated on the screen here. And, oh, excuse me, it's the one next to. This is the project site and a parcel next door. It is in the east end of the downtown. This is, like I mentioned, is a study session. The purpose of a study session is really to, for the applicant to get comments on the conceptual plans of the project from, in this case, the council and the various commissions that are present here. This is also the opportunity for the applicant to ask questions of the council members, and there will be an opportunity for the members of the public to provide comments on the project. And that just concludes my presentation. The applicant is here to walk us through the project.
Okay, good. So we could have the applicant's representative or the applicant? That'd be great. Do we have a time for the applicant's presentation?
It's about 10 minutes, and then there's follow-up questions.
Excellent. Okay.
Mayor Anderson, members of council, members of Planning Commission, Design Review. Never had the entire.
You're surrounded.
I'm surrounded. And I'm Perry Hary with Miramar Capital, and we're the owners of the property, Corporate Terrace, practically across the street. And what an ideal location to discuss this project and receive community feedback. It's a beautiful facility, and we wanted to make, and we're very proud to be a member of this community and looking forward to it. We've engaged a completely local team of design team, so that we can be very responsive to the community. Our architect, Ward Young, his office is a block away, across the street from our project. They've been a member of this community for 25 years. We've got our civil engineer, who grew up in this town, whose mother still lives here. We've got our land use attorney, who's still a resident here. So we really want to be responsive to this community and be a part of it, and do something that we're proud of and this community can really take pride in. Our architect will come and speak about the project, but I really just want to say we're here just to implement the vision and the goals and policies of the, of the general plan. We believe this is the ideal location to implement that. You couldn't ask for a better location to implement a pedestrian transit-oriented development. We're right at the entrance to the freeway. We're within walking distance to Bard, across the street from several grocery stores, across the street from this beautiful library, and within walking distance to dozens of retail and restaurant destinations. So it's really geared to be a pedestrian-oriented development, and we've designed it that way, we believe, and we hope to. We're really looking forward to get everybody's feedback here tonight and incorporating it. Just a couple of main points is, we have tried to bring the development kind of closer to the middle to make it more of a pedestrian field. We've, we've increased the side yard setbacks. I don't know if you can, Pyle, move forward one or two. Couple more, they're right there. You can see, we've really put, pulled in the buildings toward the center, away from Mount Diablo Boulevard, away from the property boundaries. We've tried to push them kind of closer to the freeway, which really serves as a good background for it. The highest levels will be right at the freeway level. So I think as far as getting a project that has some density, this is probably one of the better locations you can get, so it's not obstructing really anybody's views or enjoyment. And what, the other thing that's unique to this property is we are proposing 30% affordable. And, you know, we're open to discussion about what that looks like, but we're proposing it right now in building number one. And with that, I'll let our architect kind of go through this project. Another one major point is, we have preserved a 10,000-square-foot commercial building on Mount Diablo Boulevard there. We've designed that to accommodate some of our tenants. It is a multi-tenant professional medical office. Some are medical office and some are professional, and we've reserved a 10,000-square-foot building there, possibly for medical use or possibly for other use. And we've kind of outlined a 1,400-square-foot community building to be, to be TBD, really, of what the community really wants to see there. With that, I'm going to let our architect kind of go over the plan.
Okay.
Looking forward to your feedback and your comments.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mike Misano with Ward Young Architects. I think Perry did a great job introducing the project on the, on the whole. I'll start off with this plan right here. The project itself is comprised of eight total buildings. Five of them are residential buildings, which are, this is one, two, three, four, five. And then we've got two commercial buildings. This is a 10,000-square-foot building that Perry was referring to, his professional office. This is the community use building that in the staff report mentions a daycare center. We've found out that the daycare center isn't the best use at the proximity, so park or like a gazebo or another community use building. And then in the center of the project, right here, we have our, our building for the, the tenants to use as a, as a meeting hall. There might be a kitchen and, you know, things like that. So I'll take you quickly through the circulation. We had met with the city several times and discussed this project in informal meetings, and this is a culmination of probably about four different site plans. Our first site plan had a much wider avenue going through the middle with a parking loaded off of that, and then exiting here. What we, what we did in, in the process of the meetings is we moved these two buildings much closer together and put all the circulation around the peripheral, goes around here. So this here is sort of where we got the name of the project, Lafayette Lane, right here. So you can come off of Mount Diablo Boulevard and come straight up through here and, and not have, I mean, we have to cross traffic here, but this is all lane, this is all public interior area, and then we can get out this way here. So we have access from Mount Diablo Boulevard and First Street. Above this is a buffer area of East Bay MUD, and beyond that is the freeway. Next slide, please. This is a circulation plan, just briefly, to show that the red indicates the required emergency access vehicle space. We had to widen out here because it requires a certain distance away from the building to access an aerial ladder. Next slide, please. These are some renderings that Tim had done. This is a view looking from the Mount Diablo near what used to be called the Child Care Center. This is the 10,000-square-foot office, and these are the two main buildings that you'd see off of Mount Diablo. Next slide, please. This is from the interior, looking from First Street. This is what you'd see on the building beyond. These are flanked by two buildings here, and this is the community building right here. Or the, what, not the community building.
Recreation.
Yeah, the recreation building. Next slide, please. This is the recreation center right here, with buildings flanking. This area goes to First Street this way, and going down this area goes to Mount Diablo Boulevard. As you can see on a lot of these renderings that Tim had done, we have similar, similar shapes and geometry, but we've, we've cladded in different materials and had different undulations of the facades. We have porches, rooftop gardens with landscaping. It helps to break up a flat facade. We've got some terrace planning up here. It's all in, in the, in the attempt to break up the large facades that you get on some of these buildings. There's, the, the buildings comprise of one-story building and two-story buildings on Mount Diablo Boulevard, then three-story buildings coming off of Mount Diablo Boulevard going to four-story buildings on the interior. Next slide, please. This is just another shot, coming down this, going this way would come around to First Street. Next slide, please. These are elevations, and the yellow area here represent the existing corporate terrace buildings. As you can see, we're, at this area here, we're fairly close, and this is towards the, the freeway side. This is the Mount Diablo side, right here. As you come up, you can see that the, the buildings actually step up as the topography steps up. The topography steps up approximately 26 feet from Mount Diablo Boulevard to the rear of the property. And this elevation here, this is the 10,000-square-foot medical office in Mount Diablo here. This is the backside. This is seen from the peripheral, and this is where we've placed all the parking. You come around the perimeter of the building, and you pull into your parking. All of the units' entrances that are on the ground level are from the interior Lafayette Lane area, as opposed to coming into a loaded corridor. Then the upper levels, you come up an elevator, and then you do have a corridor. But what we're trying to do is, as you'll see in some of the later slides, have a feeling for, everybody has little individual entry porches and, and, and/or balconies. Next slide, please. Some more elevations. Again, this is the existing corporate terrace building here. This is showing some of the rooftop gardens that help break up this facade. Again, here, we've got solar panels, the rooftop gardens with, for barbecues or lounging or, or whatever, and some of the views from up here are going to be quite, quite nice. Next slide, please. Some more elevations. This is looking directly up from Mount Diablo Boulevard, up Lafayette Lane. These are the two main buildings. We decided to, to place the narrow elevation fronting Mount Diablo. Contours would say to put the building straight across, but that would ruin this, this elevation. This is the 10,000-square-foot medical office building. Next slide, please. Okay. In these sections, it's similar to the elevations. It's showing the sightline. If you were standing on Highway 24, I don't suggest it, but this is the elevation of Highway 24. This is the East Bay MUD easement, and these are our buildings compared to the existing corporate terrace buildings. This is a view from Mount Diablo Boulevard. This building, these buildings across the street, directly across the street from here, is represented here. You can see how some of the buildings are actually screened by the existing topography or the existing buildings. And next slide, please. These are some of the concept or inspiration images. It, it sort of explains what we are thinking about for the rooftop gardens, some of the individual entrances into the units themselves, some of the balconies above it. These are all just different versions of that. Next slide, please. This is a landscape plan, showing the landscaping around. One of the comments was to try to buffer as much as possible from First Street. We pulled the parking lot back here and double-planted here. So we've got some good opportunity to screen. By moving the buildings on the inside, it actually increases the setback from the existing apartments that are all along here. This is where the convalescent home is right now. Next slide, please. This is a plan of the Lafayette Lane, how we might landscape this and get individual entrances off of the lane. This is a, a plan of the rooftop garden, where we have the solar panels, some planting, a trellis area, and this is some, these are planting beds, and these are perimeter plantings. Next slide, please. Is that the last? Okay, there, the very front, there are some civil drawings, I wanted to, right there, back one. Where did it go? Back one? Oh, there. Next one, please. There. Okay. One of the comments from the city is that we get involved with the landscape and the sea, and the civil engineers sooner rather than later. We've done some preliminary calculations and determined that these dark turquoise areas are the areas that we need for what's called C3 drainage mitigation. This is not in any means set in stone, but it sort of gives you the idea of the area that we need to dedicate. These planting areas here, you can see some of the styles that can be done that isn't just a, just a large detention basin to collect water and then drain off slow. They can be designed in several different ways to accommodate that. So what, what we would like tonight is, are your comments on basically the, the layout, how the circulation goes around this building here, what the city is feeling for the, this community use building, and just basic comments to help us develop this to the next stage. The next stage, we will be making a formal application for the concessions, incentives, and waivers. There, it's quite complicated, but the concessions that we'll be asking for are concessions to group the, this is the affordable housing unit and rental into one area as opposed to dispersed throughout. This works because we have a separate piece of property. We have another parcel we can actually dedicate to this, so it can be maintained for quite a long time. We're asking for height to 45 feet and concessions for stories from three to four.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I'm not sure if the best way to do this is for us to simply ask you questions or for us to give you comments. What would you prefer? How would you like to?
If you have any questions, direct questions, I think that might be the best to clarify first.
All right, let's try that. So let me go to Design Review, Circulation Commission. Any interest in raising a question? Planning Commission?
I'm not sure who the person to handle it is. I'm actually more, my concern is access off of First Street. I know that, you know, for that office complex, people coming down south will try and turn left across there. They will also go into the bank to pull a U-turn and come back up. And I also know that there is a problem with jaywalking as people walk, use that flashing yellow to walk directly across to get to Whole Foods.
Whole Foods, yeah.
At lunch.
Yeah, we were thinking of a catapult, no.
I just.
That's a problem. Now, when we exit, we can, we can turn right only, and then it is low enough that you can actually get onto First Street to go under the freeway or to get onto the freeway. You cannot make a left-hand turn out of this.
I know, but people do.
Well.
And then if they, well, no, in other words, that's what I, one of the things, it's just some thought, because the other thing to avoid that is I see people pull into the bank parking lot, where you do have the turn.
Yeah.
Through, and then kind of pull you there. And I'm trying not to, when everybody's leaving in the morning, try not to make.
It is a problem, and right now, just imagine this being the corporate terrace, which is right there now. The, the circulation is very similar.
Mm-hmm.
I think that the, the difference is, is that, as you know, that for residential, the traffic patterns are totally different from business. These people typically, and, and this is a general statement, and it's, I try not to make general statements, but typically, the people and the residents leave in the morning and then come back after the, the main traffic has come through the town. So that might help alleviate, because a lot of the people that are going to be leaving here are going to be getting on the freeway or going to Deer Hill.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that's just, and the, the whole purpose of that is, office, you have adults, residential, you have children, and I just wanted to make certain that somebody is giving some thought to that.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I have a question. Circulation Commission?
Yes. Where is the main entrance? On First Street?
Where's the what?
Main entrance.
Oh, the, the main entrance is, no, the main entrance is Mount Diablo Boulevard, right here.
Excuse me?
Mount Diablo Boulevard. Yeah.
How many, and how many cars do you expect in the entire project?
We have, we have about, what was the?
197.
197 spaces, and there's 300 spaces there now. In corporate terrace, there's about 300 spaces right now.
But most people will access from Mount Diablo and not from?
Correct.
From First Street.
Correct. Yes. That's, that's our goal, is of the main entrance to it. First Street is mostly an exit.
Okay. Planning Commission, other questions?
Could you walk through the reasoning for the location of the affordable units in the one building?
Yes. Yeah, Perry is actually much better.
So we, we propose this doubling the number of affordable units. Right now, the ordinance is 15%. We propose to do 30% and avail ourselves of some density bonus. We, per state law, we, we could, per the density bonus law, achieve 52 additional units, but we've elected so far to go with only 22. And the reason we're able to do 30% affordable is when, when you can do them as rental in one building, you can actually finance them much easier and use tax credit financing. When it's for sale or it's dispersed, it's very difficult. It's actually not possible with for sale. So that allows us to double the number of affordable units by putting them as rental in one location. We'll have the same exact design and architecture and access to the amenities, and, but we, to put them in one location makes it easier to finance.
Other questions? Planning Commission?
Just, I just want to follow up on that. So it's purely a financial decision, because I'll, I'll be honest with you. When I hear you're putting all the low income.
Right.
In one building.
Yes.
I'll be honest with you. It sticks out badly to me.
No, and I, and I appreciate that, and we're actually doing the same thing in the city of Mountain View right now, where it, it actually allows us to get it financed. Tax credit financing is only available for rental affordable and not for for sale, and that's how we're able to double the number of units. We're using the same architect, we'll have the same design quality, they'll have access to all the same amenities. And then just a real quick follow-up on the parking. I have the exact numbers. Today, there's 247 spaces. We're proposing 196 spaces for the residential and 35 for the commercial. So we'll be actually less cars on-site than currently exists.
Okay, other questions? Planning Commission?
Did you guys look at underground parking?
We did. And, you know, underground parking today, construction costs have escalated so much that it, it's making a lot of these projects infeasible to do underground parking. I mean, in fact, there was some benefit to doing it. We could actually do more density. We could use all the density bonus if we did underground, but the, the cost, this way we can keep everything on grade, we don't have to do as many units, and it makes the construction a lot less financially viable and less obtrusive, and it'll go a lot faster than, you know, for instance, the Lennar project down the street with a hole there for, for a long time. So we wanted to avoid the cost of a underground parking garage.
Okay, other Planning Commissioner questions?
I'll throw my voice. So one of the benefits, if you were to, if it were to pencil out, and I guess I'm questioning why it doesn't pencil out when we have a number of other projects, recent projects in town where it did pencil out.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you'd want to go back and look at your map, but one of the benefits would be to soften, I mean, it, it just jumps out at me that there's kind of a sea of parking out there, and it would, you could soften, you could soften the project and get more landscaping around it and make it more pedestrian-friendly, because, to be honest, I mean, the, it says Lafayette Lane, a walkable community, but when I look at that lane right down the middle of two very tall buildings that you're going to be asking for the concession for them to be higher than the 35 feet, it reminds me of, our family went to Mount Zion National Park, and we, there's a.
Canyon.
There's a river that you can go down. It's called the Narrows, and, and you got this.
Sure.
Canyon you're down in. That's kind of how it feels to me, a little bit. So that's just one of the benefits that.
Yep.
Undergrounding that parking and get more landscaping in there and, and buffer, buffer the site a little bit more.
Yeah, and I can have Mike address that a little bit. I mean, I think this particular thing has, I mean, right now, when you look at it from a bird's eye view, it does highlight the parking, but what it does do, for instance, is it pulls it away from the perimeter. It, it gives a lot more setback. We're able to pull it away from Mount Diablo Boulevard by a fair amount, and also from First Street and kind of push everything back closer to the hillside. And we're also doing less density this way. So we're able to keep some of the, the stories along. We, we were sensitive to the stories and the height, and tried to keep it as close to the current condition. We do have some buildings right now that are four stories and almost 45 feet, so we're pretty much the same as some of the existing buildings, but we wanted to keep the ones on Mount Diablo at two stories, and then push everything away as much as possible from the perimeter. So I'll see if Mike can talk about that a little more.
In, in looking at this, I had had an actual meeting with a fire marshal, and in the, in the building code or the fire code, it requires that any building, that the roof eve is over 30 feet, which a lot of buildings in Lafayette are, and I don't know how they get away. You need the aerial apparatus, which has to have a 35-foot space on the side of your building. So even if we did underground this, this space here would still have to be 35 feet and paved. So unless, unless we spread the buildings apart and put the driveway and the fire access right through the center. So it was sort of like one of those concepts where we were trying, when we were making it the pedestrian lane and we moved the things in for parking, or excuse me, in to allow the, the perimeter access, it, this, see where that, go back.
I'm sorry.
Right there. See where this widens out? We had all of that parking at one time, but the fire marshal says you can't have parking there. We have to get 35 feet back. So it's one of those things, there is a, it's sort of a massaging of back and forth of, of having fire aerial access to the buildings. And I don't know if it's a recent code, but I know that there's some areas in Lafayette that have over 35 feet, that like, for instance, this building, you can use Mount Diablo as that, but since we are, we don't have any public street except right here, we actually have to have access to all these buildings with a hook and, you know, one of those ladder fire trucks. It has to be, the closest the fire truck can get is 15 feet away from the building. So it's, it's a.
Okay, other Planning Commissioner comments or questions at this point? I'm sorry, not comments.
So I heard you talk about how you've gone through different iterations, and one iteration that you talked to planning staff about was having central vehicular circulation.
Right.
So when I looked at this, I felt like the percentage of surface vehicular circulation area and parking to building footprint was not optimal, and I know there's lots of different ways you can cut this, but I was sort of wanting to see a scheme, and I'm asking if you, maybe this is one that you worked through, where you have more of a, sort of a complete streets approach to a central access, and the buildings are pushed out, and then, to me, you could have more space for landscaping between the buildings and the setback. And then one other sort of piggyback question is, the Ed MUD property is to be developed as Edland Aqueduct Trail, so it seems like this is a great site to have a connection from Mount Diablo right of way back to the trail, and I was thinking with the shape of the site, that could be sort of a, a landscape multi-use path along the east side, which would work if.
Oh, yeah, along here.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So is that some, so I had two questions there, I guess.
Yeah, no, I, I think that that's exactly the type of comments we're looking for, is those type of ideas and stuff. is those type of ideas and stuff. So, yeah, I think that the, a connection is, we could, we can make some type of a connection to this East Bay mud here. Uh, back to your first question, um, we did have a scheme where this was the main access and it doubled up, we, we were able to use the access and double up parking on both sides. It was more efficient, but then we're mixing pedestrians with traffic. Where we have here, we come around the perimeter, this is solely, all of this area here, all that area here is only open to pedestrians. And, and with the parking around the side, this isn't the most efficient because we only get to load the parking from one side of the street, but it still has to be twenty feet. So, there is, there is a, a, a give to put these buildings together and have a pedestrian access in that we can, we're not as efficient. What we did here with two roads, we did with one road before. Yeah, we had, we'd studied that quite a bit and that was one, that was the first, um, the first scheme we actually showed to the city in our, in our informal meetings.
Okay.
I have two real quick questions. Uh, will parking be controlled, meaning permitted, you know, so that BART or other people aren't parking there? I'm just curious, maybe that's too early. And the second one is, I, I, I get the pedestrian through the middle, what happens when you get to the, the point where you want to go over to First Street? I'm not seeing pedestrian.
Well, right, right now, this, this area here is the, is the community building and the, the rec building. So, you, you can come up here or from these elements, you can come down here, we'd walk across here, then we just need to make a connection across there. So, that's it. We don't, we do have to, a- at this point right here is where we have to transverse the, uh, the residence traffic, yeah.
Going back to your comments about the aerial fire truck access, so on the east side, you pointed it out, where else does that need to happen?
Right there. This one has it because we, um, oh, this, these two buildings have it from the center. You only have to have access to one side of a building. So, these two buildings here and here have access to the aerial apparatus here. This building here has got it right there. This building has got it right there and this building has got it right there.
So, if you had underground parking, you could still have that access and still have landscaping and park areas all around, right?
I'm sorry, I-
So, there was a question about doing underground parking?
Oh, yes.
So, if you have underground parking and get rid of all of those parking spaces, you can still have access for the fire trucks and yet still make greenery, green space, park, whatever you want to call it, all the way around, right?
Yeah, where, where some of these exterior parking areas are, like here and here, if those were to go underground, then, then those parking areas here could be landscaped. We'd still need a good chunk. The way the code reads is, and this is, this is wishful thinking, but sometimes we can convince the fire district, cause they can give you allowances. They want that wide, the entire length of the building. As you can see, this one is the entire length and this one isn't, but I, I think I can make an argument to, it still gives access with the ladder. But yes, these areas here that you're talking about, if these parking spaces here went under the building, then this could be landscaped, we'd just need to have a little, um, turnout for the fire truck.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions from Planning Commissioners, design review?
I have a question. I can't pull it up much further, so there you go. I'll, I'll speak a little bit louder, if I can. Uh, to the architect, um, I have some questions related to your process. So, I'm looking at your diagram, because that's where I like to first capture the concept and see where you come from. Have you looked at other, uh, diagrams?
Louder, louder.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, uh, sorry about that, thank you, honorable. Um, to the architect, um, have you looked at any other site diagrams besides this? Because I'm very interested in the urban design aspect of this project, uh, for a couple of things, right? Frontality, how do you continue to articulate the overall Mount Diablo corridor? Because that's a, a project in the making for many, many years and probably many more years to come. So, as part of that overall genesis, what have you done to, um, further articulate that Mount Diablo corridor? I see the two buildings that you're talking about, one is a daycare and the other is another building. Now, for me, when I pierced through that, I look at your site elevations, the way you've laid out the diagram of the two buildings with the main arterial in the center of the two, uh, main buildings that are perpendicular, right, to the street? Can you just tell us what-
These, these two buildings are parallel with the street.
Right. I'm talking about the next layer, the next layer, right there. Have you, have you tried a scheme where you gave more frontality to the city? Frontality meaning the facade to the main corridor, so that we can at least see the holistic picture here in that, uh, diagram?
Actually, we did and, and the, what you're saying and what you're explaining right now would make sense with the contours. The, the, the logical way for, from an engineering standpoint and for, um, constructability would to be to lo, make the long dimension of the buildings across here, across here and across here. And when we laid that out, barracks, we did not like it. It just makes a, a block, it dams, right now, you come along here, just stop your view right there, so now you can view all the way up here.
So, to the-
And it lessens the effect of these two buildings on Mount Diablo Boulevard.
So, I, I understand where you're coming at. Uh, I'm talking about how those two other buildings there are on the street?
These two?
Right, to congregate an entire diagram of the new building that you're proposing with the additional two existing buildings?
Oh.
How can you maybe transform that area so we don't see a sea of parking spaces all over the area? One of the things that I see in Mount Diablo corridor that has been successful recently has been that, uh, transit-related project behind the hamburger and the new Peruvian restaurant, there is a pizza place. We have a very major frontality there. When I drive from one street, I see a door right facing at me, but the point here is it's a, it's an inviting gesture and, uh, it gives you a more prominence and presence on the street versus many of these fragmented side views of buildings, that's all. I'm looking at that part.
Yeah, no, I, I see your point and I understand your comment now.
There could be different-
That's something I can bring, I'll definitely bring back.
So, in other words, you don't see a sea of island at that point to bridge into-
Okay, so, so what I want to do is ask questions, because once we get through questions, we can give comments. And then in comments, we can make our recommendations of what we really would prefer to see. So, I think we're still in questions now. Are there other questions for the speaker? From any of the commissioners here? Okay, I'm going to bring it to the city council. Are there questions from city council members? Councilmember Burks?
I apologize, I was late.
Go ahead.
What was your name?
My name's Mike.
Mike, thanks for being here and thanks for doing this, I appreciate it. Um, you know, when I look at this project, it's a big project for town, so I look at it sort of in the totality of, you know, what, what the benefit for the community would, would be from one end of the city to the other end of the city. It's, it's a, it's a large project. Um, have you given any thought to, and this would not be tied to a condition of approval, this would not be tied to a, a formal decision of this body, I don't believe legally. Um, any thought to dedicating any of the affordable housing to, specifically to, to one of our school districts?
That was actually brought up in one of the informal meetings we had with the, um, with the city. So, yes, that's on the table, the discussion of dedication. I believe that Perry or one of the staff actually tried to, was looking to who to contact for that. Teachers, basically, that's, teachers.
Hi, Commissioner. Councilmember Burke, I'm Perry Harari, I'm the owner of the property with Mayor Mar. Um, glad you brought that up. We actually today are doing a project in the city of Mountain View that's probably the first of its kind in California for teacher housing, where we are developing, um, twenty percent of the units for teacher housing. It's a very unique arrangement and we look forward to discussing this with the district and see if there's a way to kind of structure that, so-
Okay.
We're open, and that, right now, it's kind of a blank palette of, as far as the, the affordability limits and the number of units and the number of bedrooms and, and, um, so, the income levels and so forth, so, yeah, we, we look forward to that.
Okay, I appreciate that, appreciate the answer. Uh, secondly, um, again, not tied to any condition of approval or associated, and again, benefits to the community writ large. You probably understand some of the things that our city community are excited about looking to do. Um, would you give any consideration at all? And again, this is a non-binding answer, does not, you know, would not affect-
I'm not under oath or anything.
At least my decision, uh, if it came to us on this project. But, um, there's a group of, of citizens who are trying to resurrect the park theater. Would there be any consideration in supporting that effort on your part?
That, and, and that was another thing that was brought up in the, in the meetings and, and yeah, that, I think everything on the, is on the table. Um, we have, we had about sixteen, um, emails today of people saying what they did or did not like about the project and, and, um, Don Tatsen, former mayor, um, he's very articulate, as you, you know, and he had some great comments. And one of them was about, um, parks, you know, there's a certain in lieu of fee to pay for park dedications and stuff. And his point was, or like, let's, in the future, maybe we can't do it on this, but in the future, let's mandate more of the park area being onsite as opposed to in lieu of. But that's one of those items for the park theater that might be able to be negotiated as far as a, an improvement. I, I've worked on several concepts for the, the reuse of the park theater myself.
Okay.
For Young, so yeah, yeah, I know that area well and it'd be a great thing to preserve and, and bring back to life in some function.
Thank you very much. And my, my third comment would, would just be to echo my planning commission colleagues' comments about separating the affordable housing with, um, the rest of the housing. I think that does not conform to the character or values of our city. And, um, to me personally is, is, I, I could see how Malibu would be okay with it. Uh, the city of Malibu, having spent some time down there, but I, I don't know if this community would be okay with it. And, um, understanding the financial, as you, ramifications as you've explained, I understand that, but it doesn't sit well with me and I would just, uh, offer that as a-
Acknowledged, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions for the speaker from council members? Councilmember Bliss?
Uh, yeah, I had one, well, one question, first a quick, quick comment. Um, I appreciate, um, Councilmember Burks bringing up the idea of community benefit. I think one of the things that certainly jumped out as a positive in this proposal is, as you know, as we think about our housing goals in Lafayette, particularly our affordable housing goals, as I'm sure you know, um, we're making progress on a lot of fronts. Um, low income and very low income, as you know, has been an area in which, in which we've really struggled to make progress, so I'm, I'm interested in seeing the extent to which, uh, that's a part of this proposal, although I do share the comments made earlier in terms of concerns about having all those affordable units aggregated in one particular part of the project. Um, my one question comes, comes back to a point others have made about the frontage on Mount Diablo. So, one of the things that the proposal or the application talks about is the efforts in the design of it currently to think about how that edge facing Mount Diablo is defined and to think about how it creates a certain pedestrian experience, um, on Mount Diablo. And I was want, and at the same time, that seemed to some extent, I realize that you're limited in terms of your options for ingress and egress to the site for some of the reasons that you've already laid out, but thinking about having that main entrance way, which I imagine would be at least two full lanes, you know, one lane in, one lane out-
Mm-hmm.
-on Mount Diablo, really seems to break up that edge as it fronts Mount Diablo. So, I wanted to know if you could say a little bit more about what you've looked at in terms of the trade-off between how people get onto and off of the site and then your desire to try to create a really specific edge along Mount Diablo? Cause as I look at the design, it seems like having those two main lanes right there breaking up that frontage seems to actually go against the sort of pedestrian experience and the edge that you're describing in the proposal.
And, and the, both of those are very good comments that, um, honestly, we, when we were looking at how it's working right now with the existing on and off of Mount Diablo and that sort of predicated how we did our design, but what, what I'm hearing tonight, exactly the type of things that I'd like to hear, is that if, if we were able to make a larger mass of a building in the front that, that fronts Mount Diablo and just have sort of a between the buildings of the existing commercial, then it would lessen the impact of having these things split and looking right into the thing. So, those are the type of comments, yeah, we would, uh, like I said, there's nothing off the table at this point.
Other questions, councilmembers, vice mayor?
I do, yes, hi. Um, just for my clarity, what is the expected, like, review process for this? Do, are, are we even that far, just to understand?
Um, so, this is a study session, so it's just a conceptual of the project. Uh, following the study session, the applicant did mention that they would be filing a formal application, which would, uh, require design review, preparation of the environmental documents, uh, review by Transportation's Recreation Commission, uh, Planning Commission, um-
So, standard, okay, thank you, that was a question. Um, and just for clarity, the, um, the four-story height, um, is, I want to make sure that that is really not part of anything in Lafayette, that's not part of the density bonus, that's not something, we would just waive that, right? It's not part of the density bonus, app, part of this application?
Well, they are requesting a concession as part of the density bonus for the increased height, currently as part of this conceptual plan.
Okay, all right. But we'd have to sign that. And, and another one, also, the, um, the half a mile from BART, I know that's a, a number that we hear a lot, um, lately. How exactly is that defined in terms of, you know, is it as the crow flies, like they're saying, or for, you know, SB thirty-five? How is that half a mile defined, as, as in relevance to this project? Or is it even, uh, relevant?
I don't know, pardon me, I don't know that it is, uh, defined in the statute, but guidance from the state has been essentially a radius around the, the station entrance, if you will, for Lafayette, for the BART. Um, and, so, if there were a significant impediment to a pedestrian, so, take for example, the, the freeway, if the sole entrance were on the north side of the freeway and you were within half a mile on the south side, but had to go half a mile to the east to be able to cross the freeway and then half a mile back, that would not qualify, but-
Got it, okay, thank you.
If there's no significant impediment, it's half a mile as the crow flies.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Geringer?
So, I did. A couple, and then back to the clarification on the, did any plans come forward that did show or that you brought forward that showed the under, the parking being, um, subterranean, underground?
No, no.
Okay, so that was just right away, didn't pencil out or however we got to that? So, then I think a question for staff is, how many projects do we have where, um, we have not encouraged underground parking, or how many are in the pipeline right now that, um, are, have undergrounded it? They refer to the hole at the other end, but are, are most of them coming forward with doing some undergrounding? Is that a word?
Yeah, yeah, underground.
Subterranean, yes, it is now.
I would have to say better than a half a dozen projects, starting with Lafayette Mercantile, um, which may be approaching ten years old at this point.
Mm-hmm.
But Merrill Gardens, Lafayette Mercantile, Lennar, um, another project across from the library is going to be, have a study session at the Design Review Commission tonight and that too is doing underground parking. Um, I'm sure there are more that I'm not recalling at the moment, but it's better than half a dozen.
So, people are finding ways to make that pencil out in some projects in town?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other question has to do with the ten thousand square feet on the business, um, the business building or the medical office building with some other potential businesses? So, in terms of the design into the project, right now, there's eighty-one thousand square feet, I think, per your, uh, proposal, and now it's down to ten. And it looks like a lot of medical spaces would take up. I did go over and walked a little and actually go to some of the businesses there. So, did the ten thousand square foot assume a certain number of businesses would be able to go in there or where did that come from?
No, it was, uh, the, the current John Muir Medical Office and I believe that adjacent to it is the Blood Draw or the Lab, yeah, Lab Core now.
Yeah.
That lower left side is approximately ten thousand square feet. And that's what we're trying to replace. I understand, uh, in reading some of the emails today, that there's some other medical type of offices within the offices themselves, but we're looking at that lower left-hand side, trying to displace, I mean, replace what that is being displaced.
And so, are discussions already in place with current property, current owners or businesses or medical that are there? Or will that be open to some?
Have, have any discussions?
And it may be too early in the process.
No, there, there's been no discussions yet, it's just-
So, there are a number of medical buildings, I mean, the number of medical offices there, Lafayette physical, physical therapy, there are a number of mental health and different things there, so I was just curious on the-
No, there's been no discussion. We, we're just taking that and, and saying, okay, that's about ten thousand square feet and we wanted to put that back. And we wanted to put that back on Mount Diablo Boulevard.
And I think I have one more, and I don't know who to ask this of, maybe you. So on the, if you put the parking underground, would that potentially change the requirement to have the 45-foot height limit? Or you could, I mean, I appreciate the Planning Commission on the increasing, and former mayor Don Tatson, I think, said it very well as well, increasing some of the park fill of it. But would it?
No, the buildings, in order to get the density that we're, I'm asking for, which is only like 22 units more than, asking for no density at all. I mean, it's zoned for 35 an acre right now. It wouldn't have an effect on the number of stories or the height because we would basically be replacing the ground level and just parking underneath it. From there up would be the same. We couldn't make a subterranean unit because we'd have no windows.
Well, yeah.
We can't lower it into the ground.
So in the design, it could be designed differently to be less, but not on the natural?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Michael, thank you very much. And we're going to go to comments now, so I don't want you to just sit down and take notes.
I will.
All right. And I'll start off, and I'll go back to the Commissions, and we want?
A public comment?
Well, I'm just concerned we're running low on time, and I want to get the Commissioners, who are going to be a part of this process, to give their opinion so they have something to work with first. Now, I'm happy to go public comment. Do we have an idea of how many public comments we have? Okay, we have three people who want to comment from the public. Okay, I see four. Are there any more than that?
So I?
Okay, so there's a bunch. Yeah. All right. So the problem I'm having right now, I think we've got a very limited amount of time to get comments or more questions on the table. I want to make the study session as valuable for the proposer as possible so that they can receive input from those who will be seeing the project first and foremost.
I have a quick question procedurally. We have a meeting supposed to start at seven?
Right. Right, so that's why I was thinking we'd get through the Commissions and get the comments first. So let's do that. Why don't we go ahead, Design Review, get it started, and let's have comments on the plan? And remember, you have a meeting at 7 o'clock.
Okay, so Glenn Cass here. So general comment is I prefer the underground parking to work out something. I think that there's actually three exemptions that I see. The height exemption, the clustering of the affordability, and also there's a requirement for a 20% open space. And if I look at the landscape area, there's not 20% there. As far as the diversion, the bio-retention stuff, it isn't going to work the way it is right now. It's all uphill. So unless you're going to pump everything up to the bio-retention, and it's on a slope hill either. So the only downhill is basically where the daycare center used to be. And that's probably not big enough to cover the whole property. As far as conceptual designs or innovative designs, there's a picture at that point where there's some glass balcony enclosures, sort of adamant against those glass enclosures because they just, you're getting to see everybody's junk on everybody's balcony. So, but the other conceptual designs that actually have a raised top rail and a little buffer on the building actually work much better for that condition. Landscaping-wise, everything is pretty much okay. I probably wouldn't put the privates in there because the privates will do a lot of staining of the pavement in the public areas. So, and also they have a pretty odorous smell, the type of privates that you picked. And there might be a lot of owners of the building that don't, or occupants of the building that don't want to walk through that odor every day on their way there. As far as Eugene's comment, I share Eugene's comment about the decor or the facade along Mount Diablo, although I think one of the solutions is basically pull those two buildings together and create more of entry or grander entry to the property. I don't know that Lafayette Lane needs to be accessible to the public. It only needs to be accessible to the occupants. So pulling that across and closing that off and having something more like one doing is probably feasible. That's pretty much my comment.
Okay, others from Design Review?
I had a whole speech written, but I'm going to keep it short.
Seven o'clock meeting.
I think the Mount Diablo Boulevard frontage is terrible. It needs major, major rework. The idea of clustering all the low-income doesn't work. And if you want to see an example of that, there's a Sino project in Fairfield where they did exactly that. And you've got, for Fairfield, what are very nice houses, well-kept. And then you've got this other building that's, you know, I parked my Harley on my porch. So that doesn't work for me. And lastly, Lafayette's developing an architectural style that I'm really tired of. And I think that this is starting to fall into that. So I'd like to see, and I can't tell if this is a Lafayette style or if it's Northern California or if it's the San Francisco Bay Area. I haven't figured that out yet. But I'd definitely like to see something different.
Okay, other Design Review Commissioners?
Inclusionary housing. The affordable housing piece should be integrated fully as an inclusionary element to this project, not isolated.
One last comment. I believe that this is going to create a demand on Lafayette Elementary School because of its proximity. And Lafayette Elementary School isn't really able to take that demand. So I'm not sure how that's going to be resolved.
Okay. Any others? All right. Thank you, Design Review Commissioners. We appreciate your input. That's great. Now, we have a chance to either go to Transportation and Circulation or possibly Public. Do we have comments from Transportation and Circulation? This is your chance to help them out.
Commissioner Gail Taylor on the Transportation and Circulation Commission. I have a lot of concerns about the road going in and out at First Street. If the northwest corner of this project is deemed to be approximately .5 miles to BART, you'll be finding a lot of pedestrians wanting to go from this residential area over to BART. And there's no safe pedestrian way for them to go out at that First Street way. If they traveled north along First Street, they'd be trying to go north where all of the cars are on the on-ramp for the freeway. So really, the only safe way for pedestrians to get out of this area and move towards BART is at the corner of Mount Diablo and First. So they really should always be using the main entrance and exit of the community, which again puts them at more than half a mile from BART. And furthermore, it's been pointed out that there will be cars trying to turn left, traveling southbound on First into the community, which can't happen, as well as the fact that it's a right-turn-only out of the community north on First Street, which already gets very congested right there when there's cars traveling out of Whole Foods going north on First Street. It's already a very, very confusing area of the street right there without adding additional traffic to it from that pathway.
Okay, other Transportation and Circulation Commission comments?
Stella Weatherspoon, Circulation Commission.
Might have to hold it a little closer to your mouth.
Okay, is this working? Yeah.
Yeah, it's better.
I share the concerns about circulation from the First Street entrance-exit. I feel that from a design perspective and circulation perspective, the frontage on Mount Diablo is also very, at least in the appearance on the schematic A2.1, very auto-dominated for a walkable community. The carport nature looks like it's part of the medical office building, the 10,000-square-foot building. It looks like a soft story, carport structure. It does not look good. And now I'm kind of treading into Design Review Commission territory. But nothing in this particular perspective drawing says walkable community. And it really accentuates, I think, the issues we've been talking about with the great preponderance of parking spaces at the surface level, issues with pedestrian crossings at First Street and possibly even at Mount Diablo.
Okay, other comments?
Yes, Yana Sarier, Commissioner. I would say that it begs for a red light where it's blinking right now coming out of Whole Food. And because of all the pedestrians that will want to go onto BART, their safe way would be, I'm not talking about the store, but their only safe way would be to have a real dedicated red or green light as opposed to a flashing orange light.
Okay, thank you. All right, so any other comments from Transportation and Circulation Commissioners? Okay, thank you very much. Planning Commission, comments?
Brief. One is the proper term should be podium because it can be both underground and overground. And with the 26-foot grade difference, it will probably be both. That's an important designation because depending upon how it's done, it could push the building height above 45 feet and the stories from four to five feet, which would cause a, you know, make the project not compatible. Also, whereas I don't necessarily agree with it, I understand the concept of low-income rental and placing in one building. I've designed a number of them. Typically, a low-income building may have, and they can accommodate more, you know, half dozen to a dozen lenders. Each one is seed money for the next one. And you can put together a package to do it. That type of financing would not be available if you're interspersing four rental units inside, low-income units inside an otherwise market-rate project. Thank you.
Okay, other comments from Planning Commissioners? Don't be shy. We're running out of time.
Okay, I have several, but I'll try to be concise. So I just, reading through the public comment that we've gotten so far, I wanted to address the two main concerns that have been sort of rising to the top. I heard that the public's very concerned about congestion. And I actually think that one of the greatest things this project has going for it is that automobiles can exit the site and get right on the freeway without having to go through our congested central Y, the Y in downtown. So I really like that, although it looks like there's going to need to be some finessing that happens on First Street to deal with potentially like more pedestrian vehicles there. And then I just wanted to reiterate my comment about, I'd like to see if there's a way to have this project help complete the section of the Edmond Aqueduct Trail that's adjacent to it and then have a nice public access path from Mount Diablo to the Edmond Aqueduct Trail. And that would be great because Mount Diablo doesn't have a dedicated bicycle lane. So it'd be great to get pedestrians and bicycles off and sort of let them go around the central downtown that way. I also heard that the public is concerned about displaced uses. And this might have been something that we should have asked as a question. But I think that a multi-use development would be much more appropriate here. It's still considered to be the East End, which, you know, the downtown specific plan talks about service-oriented uses, and it's directly adjacent to the core retail district downtown. So, you know, I don't know if that's something that was looked at, but I think that that would be, that would be really nice here and more in keeping with our plans. In terms of siding, I think I already said, I'd like to see at least a schematic of having a complete street going through the center and moving the buildings out and having more landscaping and sort of tying into massing too. I think what was off-putting to me when I first looked at this design was that when you look at it in plan, as a plan diagram, it looks like a very typical apartment building with all of the surface circulation and parking. And I was hoping that we would see something a little bit more innovative. And we've touched on that with talking about maybe there's a way to do sort of like half-story underground parking. Or, you know, you guys will have to look at that again. But I also was wondering if it might work better here to have sort of a clustering of smaller buildings. And that's, it's sort of similar to what's there now, but have buildings that inhabit the lower area of the site and then another group going up. Sort of going into what the character looks like in the 3D renderings. To me, the, it looks sort of like a UC campus housing project and not necessarily a multifamily neighborhood. And I think that that multifamily neighborhood or, you know, mixed-use development might be more what we're looking for in Lafayette. Oh, back to massing. So there's things that don't work with the current site. But the thing that they did a pretty masterful job with, I think, is sort of mitigating the height. I mean, those large shed roofs really do a good job of sort of hiding the building and hugging it into the hillside. And in the diagrams, while, you know, you're saying that there's some correlation between the new proposed building height and the highest point of the sections for the current buildings, it's a pretty stark contrast of how the massing of your proposal will read versus the massing that we're all used to. And I think that there's ways to mitigate that with stepping back upper stories, doing corner balconies, more glazing around the corners. The, and I know this is just a rough concept, but there's exterior cladding that happens at the first and second floor, which sort of makes it look like a taller podium. And then what's above there, in a lot of cases, has vertical cladding. So it's sort of accentuating the height of the buildings. And I think that if the buildings have to be this tall, there's ways to break it up and try to sort of do the opposite. That's a just, oh, bicycle parking too. I don't think we talked about bicycle parking, and that's something that is important and I think should be, you know, dispersed throughout the community and highly visible for both people using the facility, their personal bikes, and then also bike-share programs. And then lastly, the recreational center, it looks sort of small for the number of units, so. And then just, I think I didn't mention, back to the vehicular circulation and the parking. I think the ratio that at least I'd be looking for is almost a 30% decrease in the paving that's there. And I'm hopeful that an adjustment to the layout might be able to get you there or maybe doing something different with some of the parking.
All right, I'm probably going to repeat things, but I'm going to do it quickly. Underground parking, so you have more green space, just, and I'm not an architect and don't play one. I just think it looks better. I think more commercial. I don't think 10,000 square feet is enough. I don't, honestly, I don't want to see a bunch of businesses displaced unnecessarily. So that's another thing that should be thought of. Thirdly, I have a huge problems, as I said before, with one building designated for low income. The first thing I think of is a scartle letter, like, this is the building for low income. I have other thoughts that are probably worse than that, but there are ways to finance these days. For a project this big, I think you can find a way around it. I'm just adamantly against everyone being put in the same building. But that's quickly my thoughts.
Thank you. Other comments? Other comments?
In addition to a desire for underground parking and more greenery and the separation of the affordable units, I echo, I echo the comments about more commercial. It's a mixed-use, I mean, in my mind, the mixed-use, it's heavily weighted on the residential side, so I'd prefer to see more commercial and less displacement of existing commercial out there. And then, lastly, I'm struggling to find a way this project can be more beneficial to the community. I'm wanting to see a unique project. I guess I'm just not seeing the wow factor that makes me go, man, that's a great project. So less typical, as Christina mentioned, and more innovative, and just different than some of the other projects in town. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Any other Planning Commissioner comments? All right, I'll bring it to the council. Councilmember Geringer?
So, thank you, I'll do some of the, probably say some of the same things, but I'll say it anyway. So getting to the how we get more greenery and, I don't have a specific 30% reduction, but trying to get to a place where we do have that and not so much just all the parking above. Also, to the businesses and to figuring out a balance that balances between the commercial and the residential and doesn't displace all of the, all of the businesses that are there, so some balance. And then, same thing, just very uncomfortable with the idea that there's a building that's up in the back that is all the low to very low housing, or the affordable housing all in one building. And I appreciate the, it has to pencil out, but that, just on the natural, was very uncomfortable. I do want to thank you for recognizing that the childcare center right there with no outside play area or anything like that was a true community, public benefit to the concept of that. And I do, as others have said, look forward to finding out how the project can incorporate something that does provide a public benefit. And I think others, other council members have mentioned some things that might work there. So I do want to say thank you for coming forward with this and for asking for this study session so that you can hear where the concerns are as we go forward and work together to find something that works really well for that great site.
Vice Mayor Candell?
Hi, yes, again, thank you as well. I agree with so many of the comments that were made tonight. Wonderful suggestions by Planning, DRC, and Transportation. I'm going to make a comment that has not to do with this project, but I do have, I am going to bring it up at the end of the full council meeting, that I am, I am going to ask staff to figure out ways for our city to maintain our very enviable jobs-to-housing ratio of close to one. We are losing a lot of jobs in some of our most recent projects, and I'm going to bring that up for us to think about ways so we don't, you know, get ourselves into a situation like that. So, thank you.
Councilmember Bliss?
Yeah, a lot of the comments I would offer have already been made by the Commissioners and other council members. I won't repeat all of those. I would just, a couple of things I would say, just really briefly. One, again, echo the thanks for suggesting the planning session, the study session. And again, I think the commitment in this project to looking at the low-income and very low-income income thresholds for the affordable piece, I think, is really welcome and important. So thanks for both of those notes. Just generally speaking, I think that the, as others have mentioned, the way that this interacts with Mount Diablo, I think it would really need to be something we look at more closely and maybe revisit. I'm concerned that if you look at the way the East End is taking shape more generally, there's been some really great approaches to design as it fronts Mount Diablo in the East End that I think have really helped create a nice emerging sort of pedestrian-friendly area in the East End. And I'm concerned that what you have here is a project in its current concept, and I realize it's just an initial concept, of course, that doesn't really move us forward in that respect. It takes sort of a look and feel that you get from this parcel currently, and while adding some community benefit in terms of the affordable housing, doesn't really do anything to enhance that environment along Mount Diablo. And I'm just concerned that if, when you look at the renderings of this in that block, you know, right here, the visual cues that I think a driver's going to get is that this is sort of the beginning of the on-ramp onto 24. And I think that the access to 24 is a plus, as others have noted, but I don't want it to feel as though because of the low-line buildings on this part of the development that, that you're basically already kind of entering that on-ramp when you hit this part of Mount Diablo. I'd like to see a concept that moves us a little bit closer to some of the other development that's been happening in the East End in terms of making it feel like a little bit more articulation, a little bit more pedestrian-friendly of an environment along that road. So that's one comment I would add to what's been said already. Other than that, that's it.
Councilmember Burks?
I have nothing further.
Okay, I'll just quickly indicate that I am very concerned that when I looked at this, it looked to me like a motel. A motel in a sea of parking lot. That is not a walkable community. And one of the things that needs to happen, all these perspectives, is someone needs to draw in all the cars that are going to be parked in the way of those beautiful views that are drawn here. I sketched it in, there's a lot of places where you've got people standing as if they're in an open space area that are actually parking areas. So that really misleads you in where you're going. If you want a walkable community, you're going to have to get that parking somewhere underground and get more open space. The cross First Street connection for pedestrians is critical. You have got to do something to solve that, because if you don't, people are going to run across the street anyway. It's too close for them to resist that. Solar panels over the parking lot to keep them cool if they are outside, great idea. And I think that doing something with the front of those buildings is also a great idea. But I really do think the key piece of this whole thing does come to the affordable housing not being in its own separate ghetto. I'll use the word. And that's, I think, what you're going to end up with if you go that direction. So I'd like to see it diverse, per our policies, into the other buildings. There's a lot of money involved here. Somehow, I think, it can be done. Now, with that as a final comment, I'll go to public comment. And if you want to make a public comment, you need to get a speaker slip in. I know we're going to be running a little bit late here, but we will try to hear everyone who wants to speak. John Hayman, who will be followed by Janique Gallinger. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. Very impressive, by the way. I started my business career here in Lafayette 38 years ago, so I have a lot of experience and a lot of gray hair. If Councilmember Burke worked for me, he wouldn't have been late because I'm a tenant in that building. And you need to realize, this is a walkable facility. It's walkable to citizens of Lafayette who want to work there. It's walkable to Whole Foods. It is walkable. And I heard almost no benefits from the developer of what the benefits to the community. All I heard was costs, or I imagine hear costs, costs about massive parking. And being a tenant there, the parking's bad. First Street is horrendous to get out, particularly if you have to go over two lanes. We heard discussions about the impact on the school system. It's horrendous. I came from Woodbury Highlands, that office space that was also demolished. 90,000 square feet was demolished, estimated 30 local businesses. Every business owner that I knew of was local. Everyone. Nobody starts a business in Lafayette who lives in San Francisco. It doesn't happen. 3,860 employees were displaced. These are walking people who can walk to work. You keep talking about walking to BART, why walk to BART when you can walk across the street? I was the only person who I know of from Woodbury Highlands who could afford the 75% rent hike down here at Lafayette Terrace. It's actually a beautiful complex if you haven't looked at it. The concept of destroying 81,000 square feet of office space for 140-some-odd units of housing, to me, is, you know, the, I guess the developers' right. However, you have discussed displacing 20 businesses. Every business, every business owner that I know in that project is local. Everyone. Not one person from out of town. I estimate 308 employees work in that complex. As been discussed, there's your doctors, your lawyers, your blood draw, lot of therapists. The people of Lafayette bring their children there for therapy. What you're talking about is now people are going to have to go out of town. I rent approximately 5,000 square feet. I'm a fairly mid-sized business. There's not one space available for a long-term lease for commercial space. That means I would have to move out of town. My average salaries range for professional staff between-
I need you to wrap up, Mr. Hayman.
One to 300,000. You're losing white-collar jobs. Lastly, and finally-
Quickly, please.
If the city of Lafayette, if your city offices was zoned, the city offices would have to move out of Lafayette. There's no commercial space. You're destroying the commercial space. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bob McLean actually is the next speaker on this topic. I'm sorry, it was Danielle Gallagher's on and other topic. And I think Ned Pike did not indicate what he wanted to speak on. Is Ned here? Okay, on this item? Okay, excellent, you'll follow Bob. Bob, go ahead.
Hey, coming by surprise there. Just had two things. One is on the half-mile, in their write-up, they say that the project's located within a half-mile of a major transit stop. I'm just going to suggest the city double-check that. That according to state definition, there's two criteria. All parcels within the project have no more than 25% of the area further than the half-mile, which means 75% has to be within. And if you go on Google Maps and you go from the entrance to the BART station, about, it seems like half of the parcel is, 50% is beyond rather than the 25%. The second criteria is not more than 10% of the residential units can be further than a half-mile. And right now, it seems like three of the buildings are beyond the half-mile. So, rough calculations on my part, just going to suggest the city check on that. Second thing, I guess this has kind of been pounded to the ground already, but Section 63608 and 63710 of the city code say that all affordable units shall be dispersed throughout the project. There's no, like, exception or anything like that. And, you know, otherwise, people are going to drive by and go, oh, look, that's where all the poor people live. So, that's it, thanks.
Thank you very much. Ned Pike, who will be followed by Jeffrey Bellinger.
My name's Ned Pike. I grew up in Lafayette. I've had my office located in Corporate Terrace for most of my business career. In fact, I was a project manager on the project when it was built, when I worked at Bedford Properties. And I have my business there along with 20 other businesses, and as John said, probably about 300 employees there. Everybody's very happy with the location. We contribute a lot to the city of Lafayette in terms of 300 people buying stuff in Lafayette. So my question is, when I listen to this presentation, it sounds like this is a given that this project is going to happen. Why would we want to give up those jobs, give up those businesses, have us all move out of town for something that doesn't seem like it has that much benefits, except the city's afraid, oh, if we don't do affordable housing, somebody will sue us? That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeffrey Bellinger? Is Jeffrey here? Okay, Anna Lee, who will be followed by Jill Ramsey.
Hi, this is Anna Lee. I'm the owner of Second Street. I own the building since the year of 2003. I very enjoy the environment, the community, everything here for many years. And this huge project, and I think there's three big impact to the community. Number one is a safety issue. Because the conjunction, the noises issue, and also the property surrounding value will decrease. I'm a Realtor, and I know that. And I'm asking what this project benefit to the city of Lafayette economically? I am not agree with this project.
Thank you very much. Jill Ramsey, who will be followed by Lynn Hadeen.
Hi, I'm Jill Ramsey. I'm the Executive Director of Lafayette Physical Therapy in the Corporate Terrace Complex. I really appreciate the support that we've seen. My, I don't have a stance really right now on the project. I want to kind of see how it unfolds. My main concern is just the integrity with which the project unfolds. I've seen a lot of projects not actually provide the benefits that they claim they would, you know, just around in the community. And from, as tenants, like, I'm concerned because we've never been notified from the new ownership that this was a part of the plan. We heard through the grapevine, we heard through a commercial real estate person, and the fact that we're now at a city planning meeting, I feel like we should have been notified. I am not going to prevent anything from happening, but I feel concerned that if they're moving forward without our kind of notification, what are they going to do in terms of the, as it unfolds in the community? A concern that I have is that this project, for them, looks like it's moving forward regardless of approval or not. We, as tenants, aren't necessarily, we're not, the obligations that they have to us as tenants are not being fulfilled. Things are being delayed. I had to deal with trying to keep our staff motivated and safe for at least a three-week period of time without air conditioning in our building. I have two pregnant women who are going maternity leave in three weeks, and it just didn't seem to impress upon them the importance of not having an office that was humid and between 80 and 85 degrees for three weeks long. And I just, I'm concerned if they're not willing to uphold their obligations that they're legally required to right now, and they're kind of already moved on to the fact that this is moving forward even though we haven't been notified, what does that look like for the integrity of upholding their commitments in the future? I just want to see how it unfolds and hope that also that they'll consider the extra green space. I've seen a lot of wonderful, really economical and eco-friendly options in other communities, and this just seems like just an overabundance of concrete. I would love to live in a space that has much more invitation of nature and open community spaces within a project like this. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a question. Vice Mayor Candell?
Hi, so did you officially notify, with your grievances, you obviously notified the homeowners and managers? And those were all written official documents. Do you know of any other tenants that might have had issues, too? I know this is going into the weeds here, but-
Yeah, I think that there's been other people, other, our entire building was affected by the air conditioning being down for a small period of time. We have, we have 8,100 square feet, so we have, we're a very large tenant at Corporate Terrace. About a third of that covered our administrative offices, and that air conditioner was about, out for, I believe, over three weeks. And it just seemed like they didn't really care because it wasn't affecting everybody. It was only affecting our offices, but it was affecting all of our administrative staff, our massage therapists, and all of the people, anyone who sat in our waiting room was just like, just sweating, and it was very uncomfortable. We had to comp a few massages that, in the days that got, you know, too warm. You can't operate out of a room that doesn't have air conditioning in the middle of, you know, late spring.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, sorry.
Thank you very much. Lynn Hadeen, followed by Peter Gutswaller. This is my last, oh, almost my last request to speak.
Lynn Hadeen, 649 Los Palos Drive. I'm also a traffic commissioner, but I have recused myself. I am told that I can make personal comments, and so I would like to do that. I was hit on the freeway on-ramp, Highway 24, a few decades back. And I think I probably know the medical history of three-quarters of Lafayette residents. The, I wouldn't be standing here today if it weren't for the medical services that we have in this community and particularly this complex. I go to various locations, as well as John Mear and over to San Francisco and here, and so on and so on. But the chiropractor office, chiropractors' office alone, there are three of them in that office, see 250 patients a week. The parking is considerable for that group. I see the physical therapy unit that has the elderly- I see the physical therapy unit that has the elderly, steady stream of elderly all day long, locals mostly. They are generally delivered. Generally, they can't move by themselves. And then the children, of course, come after school. You've probably seen my pillows in here, I have a great deal of nerve damage, three spinal infusions, two hip replacements, all caused by that accident. The medical services that would be, I'd like to see a replacement of the medical services because this community needs them. What else can I add to that? I think that's probably enough, but there also, they were thinking of doing the blood lab and the stuff on the west side of that complex, or at least allowing for something like that. There are several doctor's offices also that are connected with John Muir that are on the north side, and then the others rise on up the hill. So, I personally would like to see those replaced, with medical.
Thank you very much. Peter Gutzweiler, followed by Val Davidson, and that is my last request to speak.
Peter Gutzweiler, 981 Kelly Court. My concern has to do really with the ground-floor attractiveness of the project, the way it's designed. I think, Mike, Mr. Mayor, you captured it correctly. Then when you drive into the project, I understand there's this center core that's meant for walkability. It looks like putting it in relation to some of the cars, it's probably about 20 feet wide. But really, when you, when you drive into the project and you drive around the project, every building has a big bite out of it by these big chunks of tandem parking. And so, really, if you're going around the exterior of the project and you're driving around the project, I think that ground-floor attractiveness is really lacking for the project. It's going to feel like you're pulling into a building that has a bunch of big tandem caves out of it, basically, on the ground floor. And so, echoing the comments I heard from a few folks, if there's a way to make underground, or at least bring a lot of that down to street levels, so you feel like on the street level it is walkable, there are sidewalks around the outside of the project, you're not driving the parking, so that's all you see as you go around the first floor, I think would definitely improve the project, and given the pricing for what the land costs and what I'm sure they're going to put into it, it's going to be reflected in the home values, and I would think those homes would want some sort of underground parking versus having to figure out their tandem parking back and forth. So, just like to keep those comments in mind.
Excellent, thank you very much. Val Davidson? And this is my last request to speak under public comment on this item.
Hi, Val Davidson, Los Trampas Road, Lafayette. I've lived here for almost 27 years. I have, as you know, always objected to the terraces at Deer Hill, and the 44 Homes at Deer Hill, and now again, the terraces at Deer Hill. One of my biggest concerns is the city's acquiescing to builders who are putting family homes that will attract children to live next to our freeway. It's a very polluted, horrible freeway, as James Leach showed us through the video, and I recommend that everybody watch his video on the city website. The particulate matters that are 2.5 microns and less are like a hundredth the size of a blood cell. So, as children inhale, and as seniors and adults inhale this air, they're inhaling particulate matter that will go through the lungs into the bloodstream and into all organs of the body, including the brain. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous.
Please don't be nervous, relax, we're not here to harm you.
I know, I know, I just don't ever like being up here. So, my major concern for, that motivates me at all of these meetings, is to protect children. And I just find that I'm very, very dismayed by what we allow being built here. And in the future, I would like you to really fight anything that puts children at risk. I remember one of the warnings for either Deer Hill, one of the Deer Hill developments was that occupants, families should keep their windows closed at all times and not let children go outside to play. Now, that sounds like a prison for a child. So, I think that's an unlivable, untenable existence, and I don't think we should be inviting that kind of habitat into our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on this item from the public? Okay, I will close the public portion and basically bring it back to the council. I think staff, from what I understand, was looking for input, particularly on the concentration of affordable units in a separate building. Also, the increase in height of up to 45 feet in four stories. Site design, parking design and landscaping, provision of childcare services on-site as a public benefit, and the architectural design of the project. So, I think we covered all those things. Is staff clear on the input?
Yes, we are.
Excellent, good. Okay, so with that, I want to thank the applicant, or the pre-applicant, for doing this. Gives us a chance to try to give you some good feedback and hopefully some direction. Thank you to the planning commission, design review is left, Circulation Transportation Commission for taking the time to help these folks out. Hopefully, they're listening, I think they are, and taking some notes. And with that, we'll close this item and we'll continue back on our agenda. So, thank you very much. Okay, that'll take us to closed session. And we'll probably be out by 10 to 8. And we'll start the meeting then. Thank you.
So, we're going right back in?
This thing is a paperweight.
Close session.
Okay.
So, Joanne had suggested that you grab more food, so there are no hangry people.
I think that's a really good idea. Do you have a second to go to the restroom as well?
Yes, hurry up.
Okay, go.